Good afternoon gentlemen, how you guys doing? Okay, I'm Officer Friday on it with the Gainesville Police Department. Is there something I can help you guys with today?
Oh yeah, your badge number?
Yeah, sixty-six.
Were you called out here for a call for service?
Yes sir, I was. Just two suspicious people. Recording outside the, just recording outside the business, that's all. I don't, I don't think it's suspicious.
You enforce laws?
Yes sir.
Can you go in there and enforce the Georgia Open Records Act on them?
Okay, let me go speak with them and see what's going on, okay?
Cool. Trying to follow open records.
Gotcha.
Y'all went in, uh, I know the Gainesville Police Department, y'all don't violate the rights of the people?
No sir, I didn't think so.
I need his name too, that guy's garbage.
What's going on?
Come on in. They have promised the building won't record public access areas inside the building.
Okay, they can do that.
We have a security policy, nobody come in without a business need.
Gotcha, I understand that, that their right to record doesn't supersede, the policy doesn't supersede constitutional law.
Okay, well my boss is on his way up here.
Okay.
Can talk to him.
Okay.
I don't have the right to give out, you know, any kind of security. We just have, you know, security policy where nobody come in without a business need.
Andy, Andy, you there?
Yes sir.
Hi, I got a Gainesville City Police Officer here, you want to talk to him?
Is he gonna tell him to leave?
How you doing sir?
How you doing sir?
So, so this, this is a publicly accessible building, I can't force them to leave, they're, they're exercising their First Amendment right.
So let me ask you, they can't leave if you, uh, we tell them they can't be there?
Correct, no sir. They're, they're allowed to access to the building, they're allowed to access to publicly accessible.
That, that, sir, I, this is, this could be a public building, but this is a secure building. And they have to go through proper channels to get, uh, what I heard him tell you about, uh, public records request.
Say, say that one more time, I apologize.
I heard him tell you that they want the public records request or something?
Correct.
They have to go through proper channels, they just can't show up and.
Well, what is the channel that they're supposed to go through?
They have to ask for permission from our public information officer. Our communications director.
Gotcha, and when is he normally in?
He's off until I believe next week.
Okay.
They just chose the right time to come when, uh, there's nobody there.
Of course, of course, I understand that. And you, you have an issue with them coming in and just recording the publicly accessible areas?
That's correct, that, that's a secure building sir.
Alright sir, hang tight for me, okay?
Okay, I'll call back.
Alrighty. So, let me speak with my sergeant real quick and get him involved and just let me know what's going on, okay?
We didn't do anything wrong, did we?
No.
No, I didn't think so.
I didn't think so. He's aware. Say that one more time? No sir, he does not. This is, uh, another officer. What's up man? Yeah.
They're just looking for something?
Yeah, well, uh, they want to just record the publicly accessible areas inside of the.
Radio sixty-sixty on ten-four?
Ten-four, no need. Inside the building, um, but they have the doors locked and they're trying to exercise their First Amendment right.
They have no business there.
They have no business there.
Thirty-four.
They're trying to submit an open records request. But, uh, Hall County School District is informing me that they have to go through the proper channels in order to do so.
They're just trying to get us sucked in.
Correct, correct.
Well, I came anyway just to make sure.
Cool. Let me, uh, you want to help me with this or should I call fifteen? Cause I don't want to force them to leave the property, they're allowed to stay out here.
Just be very nice, very respectful. I'd love to be with you.
If you don't mind. Correct, correct, correct.
But, but they can't pick and choose which, you know, people they're gonna let in.
They want to come in and leave.
Conduct business, you know what I mean?
So.
We have business to conduct, so they, they really can't, I mean, it's an issue for. You know, they really can't refuse our service because we have cameras.
Gotcha, no, I understand that, I understand that.
It's a nice car there. It's got some nice rims. What's your name sir? Officer Beatmore?
Yes it is.
Your badge number?
My badge number seventy-three.
Seventy-three, thank you sir.
Oh, thank God you showed up sir.
Why is that?
Man, can y'all, can y'all like protect our rights in there or something?
So they're saying that their public information officer, um, is not here to submit the open records request.
I don't care.
According to the Georgia Open Records Act, we can submit it.
Okay.
So, I mean, we're kind of at catch twenty-two with that. They're either gonna, so I mean, we'll leave if they're not gonna fulfill it, however, um, they've just opened themselves up to the. They'll open themselves up to a lawsuit.
Alright, let me speak with them one more time, okay?
I mean, they can, they have to accept the Georgia Open Records Act. Or I mean, the, the request or whatever, they have to accept it.
So, um, it's up to you guys whether or not you guys want to accept their requests for their open records. Um, they're telling me that's a non-Georgia law thing, I'm not completely familiar on that statute, to be honest, off the top of my head. But if you don't, they're saying that you are open to a civil lawsuit.
We have some great lawyers for civil lawsuits, but they can, they can sit there.
If you guys want to keep them locked and, I mean, they, they said that they'll, they'll leave. If they're not gonna get access to the building, so that's up to you guys, if you want to keep the doors locked, this is gonna be between you and them.
Yeah, my boss is on the way, he's assistant superintendent, he can make that decision, none of us are capable of making that decision.
Okay.
That's not even how you, you don't get into a public building to make the open records request, you have to do it in writing and they can do it via email.
Gotcha.
So there's.
I mean, we have it secured for our safety, just for the reason that.
Yeah.
Andy's not gonna answer the phone now.
Hello?
Hey Andy.
Hey.
Uh, officer's back in here, can you tell them what you just told me?
You don't mind if I.
No, that's fine. How you doing Andy?
Hey, what's your name sir, I'm sorry?
I'm Officer Friday on it.
Okay, I was just talking to our lieutenant Joey Walker, wanted to talk to you.
Hello?
Yeah, could you hear me?
Yep, I can hear you.
I'm sorry, I was, lieutenant Walker just called me, says this is what's going on in, uh, City of Gainesville, also in the schools?
Correct.
And what have they done?
Uh, that I'm, I'm not too aware.
Okay. Well, our, our, um, our director of technology? I think he's on his way over there. But was it that, what was it that they said?
That they, they just want to submit an open records request and that's it, and they want to record the publicly accessible areas of the building.
The public accessible areas in the building?
Correct.
Which is the front lobby?
Correct.
And then what are they gonna do?
That's, that's it? That's all they told me that was their intention, is to file an open records request and record the publicly accessible areas of the building.
Okay, let me stand by, cause I'm gonna have, uh, see how long it's gonna take these folks to get there.
Okay.
Thank you.
No problem. Andy.
Yeah.
I don't have to be in it, right? I don't, I don't want to be recorded, they were already recording me through the window and I don't feel comfortable with that.
What do you think about that officer?
I'm the receptionist.
She, I mean, she works in a publicly accessible building, if they want to record, they have every right to record, I'm, I'm recording right now.
But you first.
Yeah, but you're recording because you're law enforcement, right?
Correct.
We don't know who these folks are.
Yeah, we don't know these people.
Yeah, and you, you guys have every right to feel concerned, for sure.
Yeah. So I'll tell you what, um, leave them out there.
Okay.
And we'll see what happens, uh, when our director gets there and when our lieutenant gets there.
Okay, uh, find out what their ETA is, uh, they, I mean, the gentleman outside stated that they're willing to leave, they're just, if they don't get access to the building, you guys are opening yourselves up to a lawsuit. And that sounds like it's gonna be between you guys and the gentleman outside.
Hold on, let, let me, let me put you with, uh, with, uh, our director, do you mind?
Yeah, go ahead.
Hold on.
I think path of least resistance is letting them come in, conduct their business, and I can stay here until they leave. That's what I think path of least resistance is.
It might be, I would like to wait for Dr. Turpin to get here.
Yeah.
To approve them coming into here.
Okay.
Just because normally, the normal procedure here is people don't come in the lobby and then gain access, they have to pass certain.
But it is a publicly accessible building, correct? If you have business need. They do have business. They want to open up, open records, whether they're going through the correct policy.
And I just would feel more comfortable if Dr. Turpin was here, and I think he'll be here in just a moment.
Yeah.
Than for us to authorize that.
Officer?
Yes, I'm here sir.
I have Aaron, Dr. Aaron Turpin there.
Is he pulling in now?
No, he's, he's on the phone.
Oh, how you doing sir?
I'm good, about four or five minutes away.
Okay, so, yeah, we just have some First Amendment auditors, they just want access to the building, they want to submit an open records request and record the publicly accessible areas of the building. Um, currently they are locked outside of the building. Now, my opinion is, I think, path of least resistance would be just let them come in, conduct their business, and I can stand by with the concerned employees, just to make sure that everything's all ten-four here, while they're here.
Yeah, open records request responded to in seventy-two hours.
Correct, correct, and I, and I'll allow your employees to inform them of that.
I'm sorry, what?
And, and I'll, when they come in to submit their open records request, I'll allow the employees to inform them that it's a seventy-two hour process.
Absolutely, sounds good, I'm, I'm probably, I'm probably four or five minutes away.
Alright, do, I mean, I can, I can let them in the door and they can start their business now.
No, why don't you just, why don't you just wait till I get there?
Okay. Sounds good.
I'm over here, I'm over here by, by Golden Crown, close by.
Sounds good.
Alright, thank you.
Alrighty.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's fine. And he's Dr. Turpin? What's his credentials, his title?
Assistant Superintendent.
Assistant Superintendent, okay. You're welcome, thank you. So obviously I can't force them to unlock the doors. Correct. Um, they do have the assistant superintendent, uh, Dr. Turpin, I believe his name is, he'll be here in about five, ten minutes. Um, you know, I informed them that, you know, you guys have every right to come in and record the publicly accessible areas of the building. Uh, they did want me to mention that it is a seventy-two hour process to do the open records request.
Oh, I'm very familiar with that.
Okay, yep.
I was just trying to save you some speech and stuff.
I hear you, I hear you.
Very, very coherent with the Georgia Open Records Act.
Gotcha.
Very, 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 I do it all the time, request records all the time.
Do you guys have any form of identification on you by any chance?
Oh, I do, but I prefer not to identify.
Okay, okay. Can I just ask your first name, who I'm speaking with?
Yeah, Russell.
Russell, nice to meet you Russell. Officer Friday on it.
Friday?
Friday on it. Frat, frat for short.
Russell, yes sir.
I'm Shane.
Shane, nice to meet you Shane. Alright gentlemen, just hang tight if you would like, Dr. Turpin will be here shortly, okay?
Well, we appreciate you guys.
No problem.
Alright, good luck, appreciate your service.
You as well, I'm gonna be here, I'll be close by.
Alright, I'm on.
Thank you for, uh, keeping them company while I was inside.
Hey, not a problem, it's very interesting, we're probably gonna be on TV or.
YouTube or something?
Yeah.
Yeah. But yeah, they're well within their rights, those, those people. They're well within their rights, whether they, I can't force them to unlock the door. Yeah, those people are wrong. I think they're wrong too, and I told them that, that path of least resistance is just to let them come in and conduct their business. Yeah. Let them record their, let them submit their request and that's it. Whether it's a security visiting or, or business or not, it doesn't supersede the constitutional right.
It's public.
Yeah, it's public, correct, it's a public building and it doesn't supersede their constitutional right. Yes sir. Yeah, yes, of course, it's, it's been rolling since I got out of the car.
Can we get the, uh, CAD call, the CAD number for this?
Uh, I can give you a report number.
Can we get a report number?
Yeah, that's fine, if you mind just, I don't want you to go to my vehicle, I appreciate that.
Although I can.
You can? I, I appreciate you.
I'm just at, half a minute, I'm running out of cards, so I apologize, it's on a scrap piece of paper, but.
Got the case number two zero two three zero five two nine five eight, D Friday on it, that's me.
Yes sir.
Badge number sixty-six, and that's my email if you need to get in contact with me, okay?
Okay, we just allowed to pull the body gear.
No, I, I get you, I get you.
Thank you sir.
You're very welcome sir.
Don't worry, you'll see.
I'll review it. What, uh. What, uh. You guys on YouTube, TikTok?
Oh yeah, I'm, I'm.
What, what's the channel, if you don't mind me asking?
Georgia Transparency.
Georgia Transparency.
North Georgia Audit.
Gotcha.
You watch videos like this sometimes?
Of course man, who doesn't? Especially in my profession, who doesn't?
Yeah.
This here is the.
Oh, this is, I'm in a white car. Appreciate you guys professionalism, man.
Yeah, yeah.
So, you get a mixed bag when you do these things.
Of course.
And we're not about coming out and disrupting business, we're not about, you know, coming out and causing a scene, we really just want to know, we want to see if they're gonna make it easy for us to, to file open records requests.
I hear you.
You know what I mean? And that's a simple, a simple request is, is what we're asking for.
You exercising your civil duties.
Yes sir.
You scan it with the barcode on the back.
Cool man.
It'll take you right to the channel, to the website.
Cool.
Like, share, subscribe.
Like that. Gotta promote it any way you can. Did you speak with this gentleman that walked in?
Yeah.
Was that Dr. Turpin?
No, I just asked him if they knew how to, one would put in an open records request, and the other guy came out and just shoot him inside, so.
Alright, that might be Dr. Turpin, let me speak with him real quick, okay? Was that Dr. Turpin that just walked in?
No, it wasn't.
No?
No.
Gotcha.
Gotcha.
Turpin's a tall guy?
Yeah.
Okay. A lot of you guys are hanging out here, I'm trying to watch the show. It's not much going on, I promise.
We don't get enough excitement around here.
Seems like it.
Yeah.
Well, I hope y'all enjoy your holidays. Is it?
Yeah.
Nice. So you guys are off Wednesday, Thursday?
Friday.
Friday, well I wish I had your schedule.
There's not much going on today like this.
Well, Dr. Turpin should be here shortly, okay? So, we'll, we'll let him, we'll let him make his decision whether he wants to open the doors or. That gentleman was not Dr. Turpin.
It's all good, we can all just hang out and wait for him.
That's it, I like making new friends.
Let's look up OCGA twenty-two eleven eighty.
I can't even read that, I don't even know what that means.
So OCGA, you know what that means?
Oh, I know, that, I'm talking about the Spanish above it. I guess it means all visitors?
All visitors must sign in at the office in accordance with Georgia law.
That knows a law that made you had to sign, sign in.
Well, gotta have access to the building to do that, huh?
So can we go in right here, since it's public?
I can't force them to open the doors, man.
But let's just say for hypothetical.
Yes, of course.
If we would've walked in and you were coming out.
Of course.
You know, we, we.
I can't.
Would've been violating the law, you know?
I don't think so. Why, why would you violate?
That's, I mean, all we want to do.
I told them path of least resistance was just let them in, conduct their business, and everyone can go about their day. Yep.
It just makes them look bad, is all it does, it's a shame.
So just out of curiosity with, with the line of profession you guys are in, did you guys pick this location specifically, or?
Random.
Random?
Yeah, there's no specific.
Gotcha.
There's no target, if you, when you see.
Are you guys residents of Gainesville?
When you see my channel, nah, just all over the place, whenever you see my channel, um, obviously I just go all over the place.
Gotcha.
Yeah, it's just everywhere.
Let me read that along if you don't mind too.
Education, I'm mentioning secondary education, well that's a loitering code. That's a loitering code.
It's got some more words behind it, uh, but that's what, that's what they put up there. They can defend it if they want, um.
So if you don't sign in, you're loitering? That's a law that needs to go, that needs to go.
Obviously we're not enforcing that today.
That's a, that's something that needs to go. The, the whole loitering law, something's gotta, that's, that's gotta get taken off the books, is that Dr. uh, Turpin?
No.
No sir.
Would you know how one would put in, uh, an open records request here? None of them know.
Doesn't even apply.
Not really.
No, it's a loitering, when he pulled up, it said loiter, it's a loitering. But the eleven eighty didn't make no, I've never seen that code.
It, it, it's more or less schools.
Didn't loiter in a forty, is it a forty section?
Sixteen forty.
Sixteen forty? For loitering?
Sixteen, that's, that's.
Is that Dr. Turpin?
Hey y'all.
Dr. Turpin?
Aaron Turpin.
Officer Friday on it.
Good to see you. Hey Aaron.
Hey Russ, how are you, sir?
Hey Russ. I'm Aaron. Sir?
Ernest Blom, good to meet you.
Hey Ernest, what's going on gentleman?
Uh, we just wanted access to the publicly accessible areas of the building, and, uh, I need a name, and I would like to put in an open records request, and I tried calling, but they keep hanging up. And they, nobody seems to know how to do an open records request.
First of all, my name's Aaron Turpin, I'm assistant superintendent. Um, if you wanted to file an open records request, you can send it to me, here's one of my business cards right here. Um, we'll, we'll get back to you as the, uh, as the law allows, sorry, it's running out of time. If you'll please send us, uh, exactly what you're looking for, an open records request, we're happy to give that to you.
The law allows us to file it in, in person though.
Uh, if you'll send it to me, I'll be happy.
Yeah, can I, can I do it right now?
You want to write it down, happy to take it, the law allows you to, uh, file it, but we have seventy-two hours to reply to it.
Sure, but we don't have to send it like through email, we can. So can we go in and follow, follow it in person?
You can write it down, right now, this is a, this is a, uh, access only building.
Yeah, we have, we have business here.
Yeah, he said you can only, yeah, he said you can only come in if you have business.
Then, that's not what we were told, and it doesn't say by appointment only.
Okay, uh, it's a building insecure, destroying here, if you access card, that's how you could end, you give an appointment, happy to come, could talk you. Jack, you guys come back with an appointment anytime you guys want.
You just remember now the public access, to publicly accessible areas?
The access to the building is by appointment. Um, it's open every Tuesday, every second and fourth Monday for board meetings, if you want to make an appointment, happy to come in.
So, so you have to make an appointment to, to even attend a board meeting?
No, that's what I said.
What's an actual board meeting?
Second, uh, fourth Monday of every month.
How do you get on the agenda to address the school board?
There's, there's public comments at the business meeting, the fourth weekend of, uh, fourth Monday, pardon me, of every month.
How do you get on that agenda?
Sign up when you come in, to end the meeting.
Oh, inside, you sign up the day of?
I think you're right. Well, as I just said sir, it's, um, it's open, the second and fourth Monday for the board meeting.
Can I go ahead and do my open records request before I get up out of here?
You got this paper?
Um, I just want to do it orally.
Alright, you need to do it written down sir.
According to the Georgia Open Records Act, in the fifty code section, you can provide it orally.
You'll be happy to, to write it down, you have to take it right now, I'll go get a piece of paper if you'd like one.
Okay, yes sir, you can provide that, yes sir.
Right back.
You guys look good.
Y'all look great. Seriously. Y'all look amazing. I, I didn't think I was gonna get this sort of treatment. Like from y'all, I say, I know it's kind of stereotypical sort of thing, but I apologize for that.
Well, we get a bad rap, uh, because our mistakes make headlines, uh, but ninety-nine percent of what most police officers do, you never hear about. Again, we're just serving the public, and when we got, we got dispatched, and I seized ourselves, we're here just to make sure no one's getting hurt.
Yeah, I'm not here to hurt nobody.
I, I, I get that, and I wholeheartedly believe it.
Just here to open a, open records request, file open records request, that's it.
I know what y'all are thinking in y'all's heads, I know exactly what y'all are thinking.
What's that?
Bullshit, why can't they send you this call? Well, well, actually you just came up to help, but you probably.
I'm thinking the sun feels nice.
They sent me this bullshit. That's what you're thinking.
I was walking the street in the academy on an accident.
Yeah.
Um, I'd rather be sitting here dealing with folks that I know aren't threatening anybody, that's.
I ain't trying this, I ain't trying it, man. I'm pretty calm, pretty peaceful.
Yes you are.
This, uh, this upsets me a lot.
I understand.
It's right here. Alright, so, uh, in order.
It is, it is, I felt it this morning.
Yeah. Now I need to, uh, I, I need a gentleman's name that works in here, he came to the door, uh, would you be able to tell me his name? Because I'm gonna put the open records request on him, if that's possible.
I'm not sure.
Uh, the older gentleman, what do you look like? The one that let you in, you know what I'm talking about, the guy that let you in?
Yeah, gray headed guy?
Yeah, gray headed guy.
Isn't he working right now?
Yeah, he's in there.
Just, just why don't you send me a decent open records request, a general open records request, so I can know what you're looking for.
I just had this problem at the water, at the water, the, the Gainesville Water Board, the water department down there.
I'll be happy to provide you. I'll be happy with, what are you looking for?
Kinda need his name for the.
I kinda need his name for it, if you can kinda bring him over here, or if I can go into the public area and point him out to you, I mean, I mean, even the police can come in.
You know, we, we asked them if, if, when he was coming out.
I can't, I can't force him to identify himself though.
He can identify.
I have explained, I have explained to you our process, be happy to take the, the open records request right now, or you can email it to me.
You need his name.
But I can't put the open records request in without the name. And you can identify him as his supervisor, as the superintendent, that we, the people, pay you and these, and, and off the town, off the people's money.
If you would like to write, write them what you're looking for.
Dude, you're full of crap, man.
You should be admonishing your employee for not identifying himself.
Check us out. You're definitely gonna be on the channel.
Perfect.
Yeah, you say perfect now.
I look forward to it.
So it's difficult for your, your employees to, to not benefit themselves of the public when asked? Are, are you not public officials or not?
Oh, they're just sitting on their butts in there talking.
Radio sixty-nine zero.
Oh, I want to know why employees in here are wasting their time, when they could be out there handling other stuff.
I'll be happy to take open records requests sir.
That's not an open records request, that's a, that's, that's a question. Like they're sitting on their butt and they're laughing and carrying on and joking, and these two gentlemen here, they've been very respectful and polite. I'm sure they got better stuff to do than to stand here and watch a couple of journalists try to get some information.
If you'll be happy.
You understand that?
If you will let me know what you're looking for, I'll provide it.
I need to see the gentleman first. I need his name.
You know who we're talking about, right? So you're just gonna make it hard?
Yeah, he is.
Is what you're gonna try to do.
Sir, I just walked up. Been off campus working with our schools.
You're not sure who's inside right now? They, they didn't call you?
Well, I'll tell you what I'm gonna do.
The gentleman that's working inside.
I got a call from, I got a call from our head of security. So, would you like to give me an open records request?
So, I need the gentleman's name.
That was your head of security, that's who we're talking about.
Did you know a part of the open records request is to not make it hard for someone to request information?
I'm not doing that. Open rec, record request, I need to request the records.
But I need the name to request the record.
My name's Aaron Turpin. Request whatever you want.
I need his.
So what's your head of security's name?
Aaron Edouard.
Our head of security, not here.
What's his name?
Andy Ben-Gor.
Uh, harassment, twenty-three, twenty-three, Brown, Murray, Drive, American, calling in, calling on you.
So you don't know the guy that's working in here right now? You don't know the gentleman? You're not aware of him?
I'm sure I do.
You just don't want to get his name.
Don't tell me what you're looking for. I'll be happy to get you.
His personnel file.
I need his name. I need the person, I want the personnel files. You understand that? I need the name. I'm trying to help you. Let, let me help you help yourself, because no one in there seems to know what a Georgia open records request is.
She even said so on the phone. She, she didn't, I'd never heard.
No one seems to even know what that is.
I'm the one who handles those.
And it seems like you know what it is. Okay, so you're familiar with the code. So you know you're not to make it hard for someone to request records.
I have said now six, seven times, please, submit the open records request. I'll get you one.
We're going round and circles here. We don't know his title. We don't know his name. So how are we supposed to get his information from you through a records request if we're not given the information of who he is and his title?
You want to, you want to describe?
He's in there right now, man.
He's in there. Oh, you know what? Show him a picture on your phone. I think you got him on your phone. I'll keep rolling online. Show him a picture. If you can just give me his name, I'll get my open records request in and we'll be gone. How you doing?
I'm fantastic.
You know what the Georgia open records request is?
I do.
You do? You're familiar with the code section?
I am.
You work in this building?
I don't have to answer that question.
No, maybe you work here. You work for the school system. You got a badge, school system badge on. I just want to know if you're a supervisor or not.
Anthony, last name?
So that you can train, so you can train your staff in there. Because.
Swain?
That can lead y'all into a lawsuit. It can. That can lead y'all into a federal lawsuit.
Yeah, I identified the individual.
It can.
Anthony, Anthony Swain.
Anthony Swain, what's that?
It is.
Two, twenty, twenty-three. Anthony?
Swain. S.W.A.I.M. on Zoom.
That's correct.
And, so the, S.W.A.
I.M.
I.M. Oh, Swain.
Yeah, it's probably Swain, but it's spelled so.
I have Anthony Swain's personnel file. To include. Last piece of. That displays.
It'd be a lot easier without any involvement. We'd be able to just go into the publicly accessible area.
Annual gross.
All our original open records requests.
Salary. Years today. So we're gonna see how much the people's paying this guy to act the way he did.
And refuse to identify himself. He said we should come in if we had business, not an appointment, if we had business, which we do have business. Going to the lobby of the building because it wasn't up to his fault.
Instead of all them sitting around in there lollygagging, joking, y'all should be in there training them on what the Georgia Open Records Act is. So if somebody comes up, they can do the same thing me and you are doing right now, and then they can take the information and forward it to you and you can fulfill it appropriately. That's what needs to happen.
Right now, I could walk in there and they wouldn't be able to remove me because it's an open, public forum.
Who's pen do I have? My, that's not, thank you so much, sir. Thank you, sir.
Make sure I read here?
Oh, yes, sir. Yeah, yeah, make sure I read it.
Right? Let's see. Shane Transparency dot com.
Yes, sir.
Can I ask why you dated eleven months ago? You dated January nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. That's kind of strange.
Yeah, that is. Oops.
There you go.
Ah, thank you, sir. See, that's why I do this. That's exactly why I do this sort of thing. Just to make sure it's all on the up and up.
Just saying, we're not making seventy-two hours.
Oh, yeah, you definitely won't there.
With January.
However, though, it's all here. So, December nineteenth, twenty, twenty-three. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. Wish y'all Merry Christmas.
Oh, sir, one more thing. What is, what, what's her name and title?
Her name and title? My name and title?
Yes, ma'am.
Carlos Swatter. I'm assistant superintendent.
You are?